Today's study session special meeting to order at three oh three and we'll do the roll call of.
Councilmember DeGolia.
Yeah.
Councilmember Weest.
Yep.
Councilmember Widmer.
I guess he's gonna be late.
He is, he said he would be late.
Vice Mayor Lempers?
He's in traffic.
Yeah.
Mayor Lewis.
Well, that's a good excuse, don't you think?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, he, he took Willow.
Okay, so do we have any members of the public who wanna make a public comment? No members of the public, we're going to go right ahead to the review of the twenty sixteen seventeen town budget. Robert, you're up.
Hello, Mayor, Council, members of public, thank you. Uh, as you all have the staff report, uh, and you've gone through it, this PowerPoint presentation, like George stole my thunder, I was gonna say it's a fifty point PowerPoint slide, but it's not. So, um, so what's in the power, in your staff report is within this PowerPoint presentation, so we're gonna summarize, um, what we've gone through. So just to give you a summary, the general fund budget summary overview, uh, total general fund revenues is projected at thirteen point four million. Does not include the three hundred seventy two thousand in, in parcel tax revenue, does not include the estimated one million thirty three thousand in excess E R A. Our projected fif- uh, sorry, that's sixteen seventeen, should I be fifteen sixteen? Sixteen seventeen general fund expenditures are twelve million fifty seven thousand one seventy seven. And again, our use of excess E R A that we received in this fiscal year was, um, one million sixty six thousand. So we're gonna have a transfers out to workers' compensation of one hundred and twelve thousand, transfer out to U I L for CalPERS five hundred forty eight thousand, and a transfer out to C I P of four hundred and five thousand. So here's, in general fund major revenue sources, you can see property taxes is still nine point, is majority of our revenue, nine point two million. And our total, if you add, it, total revenues is thirteen point four million, and you add in the parcel tax of three seventy two, the E R A of one million, and the total revenues is fourteen point eight million. And this is page three, now around page three of the PowerPoint presentation, so excess E R A is general fund revenue, that is a component of property taxes, we receive it, um, as excess E R A through the property taxes. As you all aware, we treat it as one time revenue allocated to towards one time capital expenditures or long term liabilities. In our budget discussions, our recommendations for the fifteen sixteen ex- excess E R A are, are listed, one hundred and twelve thousand to equity reserve, uh, four hundred, five hundred forty eight thousand to the CalPERS U I L payment for the sixteen seventeen year. And allocation to the C I P fund, four hundred and five thousand. Again, the, the other, uh, com- component, it's an important component to the town is the parcel tax, it's a separate fund from the general fund. It's a transfer in from the general fund to support, um, support of public safety services. So the maximum rate of the parcel tax is one million eight hundred sixty thousand. And sixteen seventeen, the budget allocates twenty percent, uh, three hundred seventy two thousand to the general fund as a transfer in. So you can see our revenue assumptions, four point five percent is property tax, building is a decrease of one point three, other revenues are, are conservatively projected between one point five and two percent. Um, as the, this staff report, there's have been no significant changes in revenue projections from our, uh, study sessions.
Can we interrupt you at any time? I just have a quick question about the building department decrease of one point three percent.
Yeah.
Is that about?
I, I think it's, it's more immediate, um, in kinda going over with Brett Hale, uh, building official. It's not that there's a, gonna be, we don't see a huge decline in, in building permits, um, open the next year or so, I think it's just the timing. So, um, just of where we're at this fiscal year, we're about one point three million and our total revenues projected at one point six. So, um, we're decreasing at one point three just for this, going into this fiscal year, just because of where we're at right now.
And I get, what you mean by that is the number of plan checks that are in the works now that will translate to an actual building permit during the current fiscal year are less than they may have been last year.
Because we do a revenue share, so we're having less, you're projecting less revenue, so.
Right. Well, there'll be a decrease.
So our share is gonna be less, the expense associated with that revenue is gonna be less.
Right. Yeah. Right.
Well, but that's not the reason that the, the revenues less, I mean, I'm, I'm wanting to know why we feel, why we're projecting the, a decrease in building permits overall.
Revenue.
Less, yeah. All right.
I understand the revenue share, but you know.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the whole plan check process, there's just less in the pipeline.
Yeah. Right.
So there's currently less in the pipeline at this moment in time than there was last year at this moment in time.
Right. Where there's a big ramp up, exactly.
And, uh, so.
Also, what, what we're seeing is that the properties that used to be smaller, single family, will be purchased, torn down, there are fewer and fewer, so as we're talking to the developers, they're not seeing the opportunities as much going forward to take, uh, basically a lot and build a large house on it. But it, it's not much of a reduction, but it, we're starting to see that.
So I would like to see some kind of a, a projection because, uh, if we look back, one of the things that has fueled our increase overall in property tax revenue has been the building, actually it's a boom or whatever, uh, of those, uh, scrapers and the new housing. So if we can see the potential end of that at some point, whether it's five years, seven years, ten years, um, because we have a finite amount of properties and lots. Um, I think that we need to kinda look at that because.
Didn't you see that? Do we, there's.
That's part of the H D L presentation, that's what's in the finance committee every year.
Yes.
It talks about the building industry and the things like that, it doesn't get specific to that.
Uh, it doesn't get specific.
It, it, it focused on property taxes.
Yeah, and it showed.
It showed, it showed a reduced growth.
Yeah.
Yes, of property tax increase.
Of property taxes, but it didn't focus on the permits issue and, and, and which would have an impact on building and planning.
Sure.
But it did.
Right.
Yes, right, so, you know.
Yeah, that's right.
But the property taxes is based on just the sales, many of the sales could become new construction, but there are sales that, the larger homes will have a turnover.
Right.
If, if they have turnover, you know.
So.
So I, I, I agree, I think it'd be helpful to see a projection, kinda taking what Brett's saying, pulling that out, I mean, no, no urgency to do it now.
Right.
But at some point in one of our discussions or even just our informal discussion.
That's something we can certainly bring through the finance committee and have them take a look at it as well.
Yeah, I think that's good.
Move it up to the council for information.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I, I'm along that lines and in line with what the mayor said, um, we are meeting regularly with the construction people through the.
The roundtables?
Why don't we see what their projections are? Um, that might be a good source of information as well, that they add to it, and then, you know, we've got a couple data points.
Just canceled Monday, Monday was, maybe, but they're canceled, so next month's canceled.
Right.
This one's. How, how often do those meetings happen?
Every other month, they, they move into every other month.
I, and is it a specific day every other month?
First Monday.
First Monday.
First Monday, every other.
Every other.
And they bring lunch?
Bring your own, bring their own.
They bring, no, they, they do, they bring lunch for, for the meeting, so, it'd be a good meeting, they're ten.
Mm.
Okay, he's going off again.
Marsh, Marsh Road.
Marsh Road's calling.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Other general fund raise revenues, flat or conservative, between one point five and two percent.
It's, you're right. Yeah, and we've adjusted revenues where, um, that were one time or, or the other within the budget. Uh, general fund budget, department budgets, as you have in your staff report, this is the summary, uh, of what, where we're at. The city council, as you can see, the in- increase of nine point eight thousand, nine thousand, nine, thousand eight hundred, administrative increase of one mil- one thousand one eighty five. Finance sixteen thousand, increase, planning six thousand. And then you can see the decreases, the, the major decreases in the building department of forty nine thousand, public works of seventy one thousand, an increase of, uh, P D's three hundred thirty two thousand. So the overall operation budget increase is one point six percent or a hundred ninety seven thousand, um, over our adjusted mid-year budget.
There was an error in the staff report for.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, in the planning and the heading sections, the public work component had said increase of seventy one thousand, the heading should say decrease.
In the staff report.
Right, in the staff report, mm-hmm, and then the same thing for planning, it said a decrease of six thousand, the heading should say increase, so. Yeah, nothing has changed, uh, from our first, uh, budget discussions. General fund, uh, we wanna talk about capital project contributions, as you know, the general fund provides funding for projects that don't have a specific funding source. So sixteen seventeen budget includes a transfers out of four point five million, this includes the allocation of excess, um, E R A, uh, the, of that four hundred and five thousand. So as you can see in fifteen sixteen, we transferred out two point three million to the C I P, and sixteen seventeen, uh, where you're transferring four point five million. So total, total transfers out for future unidentified projects from the general fund to the C I P is six point eight million. So this next slide just kinda shows you the general fund budget summary reserve, did you have a question, Mike?
No, I just, it's a big one though.
And so I guess my, my question is, um, since you asked my, for a question, I have one.
Oh, you didn't, I, I just thought.
You're Robert.
I guess.
So, so even though you transferred all that money out, have we spent any of this money?
Yes.
So you transferred it out, have we spent any of that, and how much do we have remaining?
On the two point three million, we've, we have spent, um, eight hundred and eighteen thousand was allocated, as you recall last council meeting for the Marsh Road.
Okay.
So eight hundred and eighteen thousand, so about, I wanna say close to maybe a, a million of, of that, two point three million. And then going forward, this sixteen seventeen, that four point five million, um, that will be, that will come back to the council as we identify, uh, the projects through the C I P. And, and I think, um, in, in here, you'll see at the end, there's, um, we, we recommend that probably at mid-year, we'll review that.
So we, we haven't spent any of that yet because we haven't approved the spending of any of that yet.
Right. Right, it's just transferred into, it'll be transferred into the C I P and as we identify projects through engineering, um, we'll, we'll allocate those, we'll come to council for allocation.
Robert, a quick just terminology question. Uh, mayor asked about spending, have we spent any, you answered, we've allocated some.
Right.
Is that the same thing or not the same thing?
It, it, it allocated meaning it will be spent, yes, it's the same thing. Um, only, only, only for this, for this.
It's earmark, it's earmark, come on.
The, the only reason why is because the Marsh Road, we allocated the amount in, in April, right? Marsh Road just began, so we're actually starting to spend it, uh, going forward, that eight hundred and eighteen thousand, so it's been incurred.
It's still, it's still in your checking account?
It's all been in the checking.
Right.
And we may have to increase that amount because we may need more flaggers, we may need more.
We hope, yeah.
I can see any flaggers on my way, by the way, all these roads.
They're, they're not supposed to be, the, the only place the flaggers are, are on Marsh Road.
It's because Mister Rogers was not out there, it was out there.
I wasn't out there. That was out of baseball.
I wanna know how to get a hold of that Apple Watch to send you a message, so we can see that, there's no flaggers, no flaggers.
There's supposed to be two flaggers at all times.
Yes, there's one for the construction project itself.
That's not enough.
Which is on Marsh Road at Fair Oaks, and then they move back and forth between Fair Oaks and Middlefield and Fair Oaks.
This is not in the general system.
And Marsh and Fair Oaks. And then there's another flagger that's up at Bay, uh, and.
Marsh.
And Marsh Road, so there's two there, we've had three on the project in total the first two days so far.
There were two at Bay at lunchtime today.
Yeah, and then, so there's a third one that's been running between Holbrook, Palmer, and San Diego.
Any, any tickets going to Landus?
Yes. Forty years. P D issued tickets this morning.
All right. Great.
All right.
So, yeah, we'll, we'll, this will definitely come back as far as that four point five million, um, to council within the next year. So the general fund budget, general fund budget summary reserves, here's the reserve, here's the summary, beginning fund balance of June thirty two thousand sixteen is twelve point one million. Projected revenues including the E R A and parcel tax is four point eight million. And we back out our, uh, transfers out, which is the CalPERS U I L payment of five forty eight thousand, the equity reserve one hundred and twelve thousand, and the transfer out to the C I P for future projects of the four point five million. Minus our projected sixteen seventeen expenditures of twelve billion fifty seven thousand, the total ending fund balance is nine point seven million. So this next slide kinda breaks out how that nine point seven million, uh, ending fund balance, projected and fa- uh, projected ending fund balance, uh, based off of our reserve policy. So our reserve policy is fifteen percent of our expenditures, our current year, our sixteen seventeen expenditures, so that equals to one point eight million. Twenty percent contingency reserve, two point four million, and then we have a capital, capital facility replacement reserve of five hundred and five thousand. So that, that total reserve requirement that we have is four, four million seven hundred twenty five thousand. Minus those reserve requirements from the nine point seven millions, uh, fund, but ending fund balance, we have an unallocated reserve of five million. As you recall in previous sessions, we've, we've tried to, similar to last year, is come up to a unallocated fund balance of five million, so, just showing you that we do. Again, capital projects, as it's, as, as was, as we mentioned in the staff report, we're entering an exciting stage with a bunch of capital projects, uh, here in town. So the total revenue currently is six point three million for capital projects. A big component of that is special parcel tax, which contributes three million, you can see library fund contributes six hundred thirty one thousand. Facility fund, uh, private donation is seven hundred sixty seven thousand, our gas tax is three hundred twenty five thousand, measure M, one hundred twenty five thousand, Atherton Channel Fund, eighty five thousand. Measure A, seven hundred ninety, and C I P, P Fund, six hundred forty nine.
Now this is six point three revenue balances against the six point three expenditures, but so it doesn't reflect on that slide, the four point five million dollar transfers in to the C I P fund.
This is just, um, ex, like George is doing to you, just sixteen seventeen expenditures.
So I have a question about the special parcel tax number, it's three million.
Right, it's taking the, it's, our, our beginning fund balance, I believe, is one point five million, including the one point four million transfer in. It's, that balance is about three million.
So the beginning fund balance of one point five hasn't been spent.
Five.
So we've had that, we haven't allocated it.
Right.
Last year. Because the project.
We're identifying projects.
Save spend.
Save spend.
Yeah, so what, what these two charts basically are, are revenue against expenditures, these, these revenue sources are how we're paying for the current year C I P. It may be save spend in the case of special parcel tax and the gas tax, and maybe a straight allocation if it's from the C I P fund that has an existing balance. But it just reflects how your current year capital projects are being funded.
Right.
Okay, and that's only eighty percent of the total parcel tax revenue that we get, um.
Right.
That was allocated.
Mm-hmm.
And so ostensibly, in sixteen seventeen, this amount will be depleted because it will be, um, allocated to maybe the Marsh Road project or all the other projects.
Which is four and, one point four million.
I think the projection for the parcel tax at year end is like twenty six thousand.
Right.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
So of, of that six point three million funding sources, here's six point three million in expenditures for the year, so. What, these are the projects that are identified in the capital improvement program, again, these are just the sixteen seventeen expenditures within the five year capital program. These are what will be, uh, part of the, the budget for sixteen seventeen, as we, the outlying capital projects within the C I P will keep, will, will come to you again in mid-year or throughout the year as we, we get closer to having those projects come out, ready for, uh, construction. So I'm not gonna go through this whole slide, that kinda tells you how the, everything's broken out between, um, expenditures, I can kinda give you, there's one million twenty five thousand streets and roads. We have, uh, ma- Marsh retaining wo- road, Marsh Road retaining walls, two hundred thousand, park improvement programs, two hundred thirty five thousand, we have drainage improvements of seven hundred forty thousand. We, um, have the finishing of the, uh, El Camino Hawk Beacon of a hundred twenty seven thousand. Series streets lights, uh, will begin this fiscal year, seven hundred fifty three thousand for that. As we recall, we added the quad gates for a hundred thousand, um, last year.
Study.
The study, correct, um, it's the quad gate study, uh, for the eventual event, potential construction, so that will be programmed in the, out of years.
In here we show the civic center, uh, design donation, the Atherton Library donation going toward the prep work for the civic center. Do we have in here the, uh, the other budget piece that's allocated to civic center, the development?
The capital facilities, their capital fund.
Yeah.
It's the.
It's seven sixty seven?
Yes, three hundred fifty four thousand.
The building.
Yeah, three fifty fours. Is it up there?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, I see, okay, great.
Just, on that donation.
It says civic center.
Can you just walk me through how we're booking the donation, how that flows through, why that appears here?
Um, the donation is because it, it's part of the contract for the, the design, uh, that went before council, so this second phase is actually, that's the component, six seven hundred sixty seven thousand. So that component is, is gonna be the expense, but for the Atherton now, uh, that will, that will come into the fund also as that amount. So it should be the money we, that comes in is the money that we're actually spending, so that seven sixty seven is again, the total component for the design.
So, so you're thinking here, you're spending about a thousand roughly, it's about a thousand, about there?
With W R N S.
Yeah. Yeah.
That'll just complete the design.
Right.
That'll get through design development and start the construction drawing phase.
Okay.
So I, I have one question, the, the budget detail shows parcel tax revenue coming in the full, in both sixteen seventeen seventeen and eighteen, and I thought sixteen seventeen was the third year of the.
Seventeen eighteen is the last year.
The last year.
Seventeen eighteen, yeah.
Yeah, so we go out in twenty seventeen in November to renew the parcel tax.
So that's for the capital projects, can you kinda go over real quick the library fund, kinda give you.
Oh, hold on.
What happened?
The placement, oh, oh, you, you skipped forward too?
Which one?
Equipment replacement?
No, the, the library's the next one.
Okay, sorry. So you put it up.
I did, I hit, there's, there's a delay, and I gotta be patient with it. Uh, so the next slide is the library revenue to expenditures, so this kinda shows you that the library fund proposed revenue is one point three million, again, this is through the property tax components of the library, this is what we're projecting to, to be part of, um, the revenue for the library. Also, this one point three million will be the, uh, the town will rec- will not receive it actually, it's part of that, that's retained in this, uh, library trust funds, but we, we book it anyways. And we're expanding six hundred eighty eight thousand, of that six hundred eighty thousand, six hundred thirty one thousand is a civic center component, the remaining amount is for maintenance and operations. Basic level operations and utilities and maintenance for the library.
But it's surprising that we went down in our expenditures from the current year, and that was the budget, is that actual or?
That's, that's budget, that's because we projected to be farther along in the project.
So, so that's budget, but we didn't use all that nine eighty five, okay.
Correct.
So what, when that, if I could, uh, if, if, when they, we spend the money, are, are we spending the money that we're actually managing, or are we having the check written by?
No.
The money that's coming from the county?
It, the way it works is we have to spend our money first before we can get what's in the trust.
Okay.
And just to really be clear about this graph, um, the expense, the expenditures are against the, uh, blue line. The green is against the blue line, and the blue line is the excess fund.
Excess don't replace.
So the operating expenses for the library are, are nowhere in this graph, okay, right, okay, just.
Part of the county's budget.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, the next wa- slide is the equipment replacement fund. As you can see, uh, we're in sixteen seventeen, we're expect, uh, expecting revenue of two hundred twenty six thousand and to expenditure of two hundred eighty four thousand. The revenue comes in as charges through the different departments for replacement of equipment and, uh, and vehicles. So as you can see, uh, this two hundred eighty four is for purchase of police and public works vehicles, in the staff report, there's two, uh, police vehicles for purchase, uh, for a total outfit of hundred and, a hundred and five thousand. Within the staff report as well, there's the public works, uh, purchase of a vehicle for thirty eight thousand, that's a, uh, hybrid vehicle. That would be potential hybrid vehicle, that's what we're looking for, and that would be for the town arborist. And, uh, in the staff report, the Dodge truck is a two thousand one Dodge truck, and, um, it's ready to be replaced, and so that's.
So do these come back to the council for approval, or since they're equipment replacement fund, they just get done?
Uh, they're, well, they're gonna be part of the budget, since this is gonna be part of the budget, if it's gonna be more than that, we will bring it back to council.
Okay, so, um, yeah, for the town arborist, I'm just not so sure for the amount of miles that we're doing, uh, you know, if there's a substantial or significant cost between a regular vehicle and a hybrid, I would, I would, uh, you know, for four or five thousand yep, miles that we're gonna drive per year.
Okay.
Just driving around, the, the, the extra expense is, is actually justified, especially given all the other green things we're doing around here. So, um, so personally, I think that the, the, the price was a little bit, is a little bit high, um, but I just would like to make sure that you're looking at all of them. And I'd like to know what we're buying before we buy that, the police cars, I think, I agree with you. Personally, the SUVs is, 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 uh, actually, uh, more than needed because the officers, the big officers can't get in cars easily, so
Right.
We may need to buy more than one, uh, in my mind, but, um, but the rest of the stuff and the generator that we discussed, I'm, I'm okay, but it's just the hybrid, which is, uh, I think.
Right. Right, yeah, we'll do that.
Well, I, yeah, I, I haven't, we have, we didn't talk about the generator, I, I'd like to talk about that, cause then, we're rebuilding the whole civic center. I mean, I know our current generator is long gone, uh, but the sixty thousand dollar charge to buy a generator, I don't know if that's the right thing for us to do, uh.
We're, we're looking at either buy or, or lease, I don't know if Gordon, you've been part of those conversations with Steve or not, but, uh, the, if we're leasing one, then we need to find somewhere to put it. Cause it won't, it, it's not able to go back in the back, so we'd have to either put it in the front parking lot, which has the shortest run of cables, or try and get it into the secure lot, I'm not sure if that will work. We haven't vetted all of that, that out, we just put money in there for that, to go purchase.
But you also said if you, if you bought it, it would be transferable into.
It would be forward compatible, yeah.
Into the new civic center. And just that.
Well, then, that's fine, then that, that makes it, that's really different. But I think that then requires some coordination with W R N S and what their whole game plan is, and. You know, and I, I assume a generator's better for us than a, uh, battery bank.
So if we purchase one, can we make sure it's portable?
Yeah, that, that's all the stuff we're looking into, yeah. Portability, location, if it's leased, can we return it, maybe we buy a used one that's been around for a while with a less life on it, and we don't need it for a few years, uh, we're still working on that.
But Rick brings up, oh, sorry.
No.
Rick brings up a great point, there should be a cost analysis on, on the, they do have these, uh, batteries now that they get charged during the day, uh, or at night, I mean, they dissipate during the day. And you can actually get a, you know, a large enough one to, to serve as your emergency generator, so we should, should look at what, what are, who think our needs would be. Obviously, they'll have a life of like one day, and we may have an outage for one day, so we should do that now.
Well, remember that, a lot of these are for the emergency services.
Yeah.
We cannot have a police dispatch control panel go dead. It, it, that becomes a real problem.
Yeah.
That's what that, that's what that generator's saving us for now, if the police department, not really for the.
No, we understand.
Yeah, we, we get that, I mean, once we've got the new civic center and we have solar panels, then we, we have a whole different issue because we generate our own electricity and we can charge a battery with our own generator. We don't need to depend on the grid, but as long as we do, so my point was not to emphasize one technology over the other, only to make sure we're doing the analysis in the context of the new civic center, because it changes the whole dynamic.
It, it does, and one of the other issues though, if, if it's not a forward compatible generator, one of the issues that, you know, staff's also thinking about is, you know, in, in the event of an emergency, we have to open a shelter. And if we have to open a shelter and that shelter is the most logical location is at the park, we'll need for that facility as well.
So the portability comes down.
The generator is portable, it's not forward compatible to the new building, but it's a portable generator, we can then move it.
Yeah.
To the park and use it in the event of an emergency. So there's all, all kinds of issues we're kinda thinking about with respect to that purchase.
Good.
It's just a placeholder for that, for the budget.
So I'll just.
Sorry, just a question on, on this graph.
Mm-hmm.
I don't really understand the difference between the F Y fourteen fifteen actual, okay, so that's what we did last year, and the adopted for fifteen sixteen, does that mean, does adopted mean that's the approved budget, or that's what we expect to spend, or?
That was the approved budget in fifteen sixteen, the hundred and twenty two thousand. Um, the eighty four thousand, majority of that was the, uh, supplemental, uh, expenses for the P D, police department. So that we purchased no vehicles, uh, no major equipment other than whatever with the supplemental component for the P D. So, we purchased no vehicles, uh, no major equipment other than whatever with the supplemental component for the PD, which was the, um, some portable radios. Uh, also in there was the Trakit component. There was fifteen thousand for maintenance for Trakit, was we were moving forward with the iTrakit, eTrakit. So, that was that, that component for the fifteen, sixteen.
So, what do you expect the, uh, it's gonna be, we're not quite there yet, almost, we should be.
We, we should be there. I, we, we, we'll be on, on with the eighty-four thousand.
For dimensions?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
We should be on board with, with meeting that expenditure for this fiscal year.
So, we have a thirty-seven thousand, uh, rollover?
Mm-hmm.
Which would maybe offset our projected, or has that already been rolled over into the two twenty-six?
It, it is, it, it is rolled over. So, our projected, uh, ending fund balance after the end of sixteen, seventeen is about six hundred and seventy-five thousand in, in that fund.
So, these are just the revenues and expenditures coming in?
Mm-hmm.
Revenues coming from each department as part of the operational budget. Expenditures are current year expenditures. There is a fund balance related to that.
Right.
Which you see in some of the backup documentation. That's the six hundred and seven thousand dollar.
Yeah.
Number that we're talking about.
I wanna, uh, if anybody else, do you have any, uh, comments, uh, Eric, anybody? Before we, I just wanna, uh, circle back to the, uh, comment that Councilmember Whitmore made about the, uh, uh, hybrid, um, you know, vehicle versus a gas vessel, um, exhaust company knitting the car.
I don't like the gas vessel.
We can put the arborist on the segue here.
Yes, you know, I, but I just think, you know, if we just come up with a budget number that makes you feel comfortable, everybody feel comfortable, I think we can find an electric vehicle within that budget number, whether it's a used vehicle. There's, we are going to, we're entering, uh, an era where car sales are slowing down. There's gonna be really good car deals, especially in the electric vehicle, um, area. Not that I'm an expert on it, I just listened to the radio, so that's my opinion.
I would caution. I support that. And when I spoke to, to the city manager, he said he wanted a certain type of vehicle that could be multifunctional by other people and that's why he picked the truck. But I agree with you, there are like volts and you've got a lease option that, yeah, we might wanna look into leases because you, with all the rebates, you get it for the first year for free.
Okay, well, so, well, so, so if we can just have a little consensus that, I mean, within a reasonable budget amount for a vehicle for the arborist, that, you know, we would prefer to have it be an electric or a.
Rather than setting the budget for the purchase of our vehicle, I, I can certainly advise you where we are in that decision-making process as we go along. We don't know what the vehicle prices are. When I talked to a couple of council members, the issues that I brought up were, Steve and I hadn't really talked in much detail about what specific vehicle we wanted to purchase. And from my perspective, the arborist is, uh, right now, a limited term position. It may or may not be a continuing term position, we haven't made that decision yet. Um, when we do, that's great, if it's gonna continue. If it's not, then we might need other alternatives. That's a pool vehicle used by public works. It might outlast the life of the employee. And in public works, they're picking up barricades, they're putting signs in the back of their truck, they're picking up cones. A, a truck makes more sense to me than a Chevy Cavalier or a Taurus or something like that. So, Steve and I have yet to vet that kind of conversation through.
All right.
I, I'm happy to keep you counsel surprised as to where it's moving.
Just my, my, uh, opinion about electric.
Yeah, I mean, we talked about this. My only concern is for somebody that's gonna drive it less than four, five thousand miles a year, to thirty-eight thousand dollars is a big budget item and we are facing this situation where we don't exactly know what's gonna happen with the civic center. So, I think we have to be particularly conservative because these dollars may be far and few between. That, I, I understand the versatility of wanting something in public works that other people can use and that the position may not be long-term, although my guess is it probably will be, but.
Could be.
I think.
We haven't made that decision yet.
That's why I said maybe you could bring that one back.
I think that's a good wonderful back.
That's why I asked that question about.
Okay, all right. You just keep this advice.
Will do.
Workers' comp?
Workers' comp. So, this next one, workers' compensation fund, this is for the, uh, the charges. We charge all the different departments, a, a, a overhead charge based off of, um, salaries and wages and it comes into this workers' compensation fund. So, as you recall, last year, we expended six hundred and thirty-one thousand, uh, out of ERAF to pay off the negative equity for the workers' comp. And that's reflected in the fifteen, sixteen adopted budget, the expense and revenue. This year, the, uh, charges to the workers' comp fund is two hundred and ninety-three thousand. A big, the majority of that portion is, I believe, two hundred and twenty-five is the PD component. And the expenditure this year is one fifty-one, nine thirty-two. Uh, we're, we're budgeting for an assessment of a hundred and forty-six thousand. We don't know if that, it will be, uh, if it'll be higher than that or it could be lower than that. But again, we're gonna pay a hundred and twelve thousand towards our negative, negative equity that we have for this current fiscal year. So, that will be, um, we will bring that in here. We'll add, we'll add a hundred and twelve thousand from the general fund ERAF into here as revenue and expenditure uh, once, um, we get through this session. Any questions regarding this one? None, okay. Next one is general liability fund. This is all our, um, the charges that come in for our, our liability and property losses claims. So, expenses are projected to be about two hundred and seventy-six thousand this year. This includes the total liability and employment practice coverage. So, that component is, uh, a hundred and thirty-six thousand is the liability, uh, expense projection. And the employment, uh, practice is thirty-nine thousand, the policy. And the self-insurance retention, we have a budget of a hundred thousand. And, and, um, we budget a hundred thousand because our, our self, our SIR is twenty-five thousand. So, we budget four claims a year. Doesn't mean that we do have four claims, but we, um, budget that amount.
Can you just walk me through that? Is that essentially deductible or when were those, when do we pay a twenty-five per claim? Under what circumstances?
When, when a, a claim is put in for a liability or property loss claim, it's put into ABAG. ABAG then notifies the city if there's a claim. And usually, we'll bring, uh, the claims to the council, uh, for review, uh, if there's a, a, a huge claim. And when that happens, we have to pay twenty-five thousand, that's the, basically, our deductible. And after, anything over twenty-five thousand, after that is paid, then ABAG picks up.
So, I have a, a big question because there's a big question mark over the ABAG organization overall. Um, they've just, uh, voted to, as, as everybody knows, MTC, uh, has, uh, uh, said that they're gonna hold back their funding for their planning, land use planning component, which is the big part of their operation. And, uh, so, the General Assembly last month, um, ABAG, uh, voted, they, they hired, um, the consultants of, um, we've had those consultants.
Management partners.
Yeah, management partners, so thank you, you were there, right? That, and, and they advised that, um, you know, there's this potential, um, merger that could, could happen, um, but, uh, which was option number four, but, uh, the likelihood of, uh, MTC agreeing to that, a complete merger with an overarching new entity was unlikely. But then we had to go to, um, kind of bifurcated, uh, approach. So, that has not yet happened, right, Gordon? That is yet to be decided. Uh, but what's gonna happen if ABAG completely disappears? Because that is what everybody's saying is gonna happen if they can't perfect the merger.
ABAG plan is separate and apart from ABAG.
Okay.
It's not supposed to be affected by this MTC.
Their insurance plan?
Yeah.
Even if they're no longer an entity?
Correct, but that's what they've said. I don't believe that to be entirely the case myself, but.
I can't see how that would be.
I can't see, I, I agree, I can't see how that wouldn't affect it in some way, but they've assured us ABAG plan will continue to be in existence, because it's a separate JPA of the member agencies.
Okay, anyway, do you see my concern?
Yes.
Because I think that we need to be looking at other opportunities for insurance.
We, and we, and we have, we're actually ahead of that one. Staff has looked into two other potential insurance possibilities for the town for general liability and workers' comp.
Will you bring it to the council for discussion?
We brought them to the council.
Two years ago.
Two years ago. For consideration of that time, it wasn't, um.
Feasible, yeah.
It wasn't fiscally feasible, the, the, because of our claim history, it was a little high.
Yeah.
Uh, and so, if we transfer over, we'd had a, a huge, uh, initial outlay. So, we decided not to do it at that point.
Okay.
But we might be pushed in that situation.
Yeah, yeah. And is our situation a little better?
Yes.
Our his, cap record, I think, couple of the last couple of years, a little bit better?
Yes, it is.
All right. Thanks to our general counsel here.
We've got things moving.
Yeah, thank you.
Off the balance sheet.
Yes.
Yeah.
Off the liability balance sheet, okay.
So, did, uh, our general counsel or city attorney put any input in, uh, on, on these numbers for you?
No, he, he, he had, he didn't. But, um, ju- just to kind of, on the ABAG, um, component, we've, after all this is going on, though, in light of it, we've been still, uh, renewing our policy and our plan with them, like, like business as usual. So, we haven't had any indication that, you know, that we're not gonna have a, you know, insurance through ABAG. So, like George says, we definitely can continue to look into that.
And just to make sure that they're putting it in the insurance bucket instead of their operating bucket.
Yes, exactly.
Somehow.
Just to be clear, these, these types of claims that we're talking about are trip and fall.
Right.
Low hanging branch, pothole, trees falling on.
Something happened to my car.
Yeah, those sorts of claims.
They don't fall on cars, they fall on motorbikes.
Right.
And Bob, did you wanna make a comment?
Do they buy, um, conventional insurance or is it all a self-insurance pool?
It's a self-insurance pool.
Because ABAG is the whole nine Bay Area.
Yeah, I, I understand, but. All right, I hope it's better run than the workers' comp pool.
Yeah, this, historically, there was a period back in the eighties where insurance companies stopped insuring municipalities. Just said, you know what, you know, there were some claims and we don't like the California courts, and they stopped. So, everybody that was a municipality was forced into these pools. There were no, there was no other option. You had to have some kind of insurance and these pools arose because they were basically third-party administrators that understood the municipal situation where insurance companies didn't. That has evolved over time to where there are insurance companies now that do insure some cities, especially little tiny cities. But even those generally fare better in these pooled arrangements. It's just, there are a lot of even small cities that are self-funded for workers' compensation and liability. Um, it's surprising, the city of Monterey is self-funded, but it does have above a certain level and they, they go out and seek private insurance for umbrella kinds of situations to thirty, fifty, sixty million dollars or something. But these pooling arrangements, um, were a necessity and they continue to be a, in most cases, a favorable, favorable option.
Yep, the next slide is the employee benefit fund. This is the last slide, slide of the general fund budget presentation. So, the major expenditure in this item is the pay-as-you-go, retiree health. Uh, it's about four hundred and twenty-four thousand, um, expenditure. And the charges come in from, uh, the different departments for retiree health and into this fund. And also, in prior years, OPEB allocations were ba- were allocated into this fund and paid out to our PARs trust. So, revenues of six hundred and sixty-five thousand to expenditures of four hundred and eighty-two thousand in this fund.
Just, can you, it's a little erratic up there. Can you just explain what's going on? Is it the OPEB thing or is it?
No, that'd be, exactly, you hit it on the nail. So, in fourteen, fifteen, the OPEB was, uh, we committed a hun- one million twenty thousand towards the OPEB allocation. So, that's in that one point five million revenue number, um, five hundred and sixty-three thousand expense. It was expensed in this number, uh, for fourteen, fifteen. However, the amount was actually a hundred and twenty-four thousand, because when we do, at the end of our fiscal year, we kind, we calculate what we've contributed based on the pay-as-you-go and what we've contributed to the OPEB trust. And we, we, we adjust, we pay, basically paid one point four million and our OPEB obligation was four hundred and eighty-six thousand. So, we booked it as a, um, we adjusted the expenditure, it, it, the net was a hundred and twenty-four thousand. And we have a positive, um, asset balance of two point five million in the, um, financial statements as a fifteen, as a fourteen, fifteen. So, it was ex- brought in and expensed in this fund. So, in fifteen, sixteen adopted budget, that one point two million in revenue includes six hundred and eighty thousand, six eighty-four allocation this year from, that was the ERAF component, six eighty, six eighty-four. So, that's in as revenue of one point two million and out as part of the one point one million in the expenditure. This year, we have no contribution to OPEB, so this is just straight pay-as-you-go.
So, when is our next, um, actuarial evaluation of?
This fall. We will, we will coordinate one this fall.
Okay.
Um, and, um, hopefully, that'll be for next five years.
One of, one of the exciting things in this year's finance budget, though, is, you know how we have OpenGov on the town's website?
Mm-hmm.
Allows you to manipulate the town's financial data. Uh, we've got a, a new vendor called GovInvest, uh, that was turned off to the town. And, uh, you may have seen them at one of the League of California Cities presentations. They allow us to feed in our pension actuariales and our OPEB actuariales and allow us to manipulate the data, how much, what, what, what would happen if we contributed another million? What would our rates look like in the future? And make those calculations on our own, instead of paying a third party to come in and do an actuarial every two years. Finance community's gonna love it.
Yeah. Yeah, we're, we're in the process, yeah, we're in the process of creating, we, we gotta give, getting them the information. And a lot of information, it involves getting information from COPERS. So, they're basically put in, um, employee data from as far back as we can get. And then from that point forward, the, the tool will be able to build out, you can do scen- uh, scenarios.
Wow.
So, yeah, so that'll be another cool tool to have.
Somewhere that, just not, and not COPERS captive.
Right.
Correct.
Does it do Monte Carlo?
Monte Carlo.
I'm not sure, but it, it's pretty, George and I have seen it, it's, it's pretty, pretty neat, robust tool. And it's just, um, getting them the information and, and we can put in there also, you know, our, we'll have in there the, this, the PARs trust amount that we've contributed, the five million, so you can see that in there as well.
So, I would just recommend that when you announce it, that you just say it allows you to do analysis and scenarios as opposed to manipulate, because manipulating doesn't go with finances.
Good point. Good point.
So, strike manipulate from the record. All right, all right.
So, that slide concludes this agenda item, um, for the budget.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
Great job, Robert.
Robert, nice. Anybody have any questions for Robert? Any comments? Okay. The, uh, yeah, the charger really, it really helps you, uh, partner up with your narrative. And the narrative is very good.
There is one caveat, the CIP is actually.
The CIP, uh, the allocation.
Is this budget item number two or?
Yes.
Okay.
Budget item number two is the CIP component, is tied to this. Uh, within your, your packets, there's scenarios of the parcel tax, uh, if it eliminates and then the CIP program is behind it as well. I didn't wanna create this, print the CIP program for both, because it's part of the, it's part of the first budget, but also the second budget, the second.
So, then, my question to that is, part of my council note, uh, that went out in advance is in regard to Middlefield Green Striping Project. That is not included as an actual number within the CIP. If you'll go back to the PowerPoint for that.
Oh, the.
The pie chart.
Yeah.
Uh, it doesn't include the one point five million Middlefield Green Striping. So, it lists it in the narrative of the CIP project for bike ped, but it doesn't actually put the money in there. So, the question for, I'm putting to the council now is, in which fiscal year do you want the one point five million for the green striping project on Middlefield to go in, if at all?
Let's, uh, let, uh, Councilmember to call you.
So, I think, you know, we, we made a big investment in our master plans and putting the civic center aside, because it's by far the most important and costly project and it's, it's its own animal. But looking at the other three, um, we've had really good discussions over the years about different things that we consider to priority. And there was no question that the most important bike ped master plan item that we all identified was Safe Roots to School, Middlefield rising to the top of that list. Granted. Granted, crossing El Camino is a critical element, but we're taking care of that with the uh, with the Almond draw, uh crossing and the other two, so uh I personally think that the the three most important things in front of us, not looking at normal maintenance of the roads, uh are the Middlefield uh bike path, a- and I'd like to find a way to do that, to approach that, so that we have some test, so we can show our residents what it's gonna be like, and before we spend the entire one point five million. I I wish we had done that with the Sherros for for the Class Three, which I think was a great project, and it really is good. And I see more people riding those roads on bicycles than ever before, so I think we've been successful in that effort. But I would have liked to roll it out slower so people could see it, and I think the Middlefield green stripe down all of Middlefield from border to border is gonna be a big deal for people, and I'd like to find a way to do it slowly, but my preference would be to put it in this budget. And I think it's a good time to do it, because we won't have actually launched on the Civic Center construction project in this fiscal year. We'll do that in the beginning of the next fiscal year. So this fiscal, and so I think it's better for staff management to be able to do that significant project this year will be done with Marsh Road. I I I really think it's a good time, and I'm not certain we'll use a hundred thousand dollars for the quad gates on the study, I think, I don't think we should do the quad gates this year, I think we should do the study, I think it's really important coming off of the quiet zone we've established. And we've got in there, my third most important project is what we're gonna do in the park, and we've got in there, in this budget, the one that is the taking out that fire turnaround and making it a lovely walkway going past the event garden, so I would strongly support putting this Middlefield project in this year.
So, so my comment would be, uh and coming off of the experience of the Sherros, I think that the green striping and looking at what other communities have done, the green striping is most important at intersections. Twenty-five feet, fifty feet before the intersection, then as it goes through the intersection, kind of these greens, uh you have stripes or 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 blocks, and I think that we should do that and see what the reaction is. You know, I I don't think that a green stripe all the way down from Redwood City to to Menlo Park is 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 gonna be well accepted. Uh I do think that it, at these intersections, it's the most dangerous, that's where we're having the accidents, and we should have that for that. And and I would recommend we do that and then see what we wanna do from there, and so whatever the cost is to do that section, that portion, at every intersection, um I I I'm a hundred percent in favor of doing that, but uh but not putting in all the money for painting the whole thing green all over the place, we can do that in the, next year. If we, if we don't spend the money, it carries forward. And so it's, you know, it will be there, but uh but I think the intersections is what our focus should be. And I don't wanna get that reaction back from the community that says, what the heck did you do now?
Any other council members?
To the chair, um do we know the status of Menlo Park's expansion on their bike lane on Oak Grove?
Oak Grove.
Uh I don't know, Gordon, have you talked to them recently?
Yes, but more about Marsh Road.
Yeah.
No, I don't, but I do know that um with our consultant work, they pointed out that we would want to coordinate the effort with Menlo Park, so that's certainly part of the effort, if you wanna go through with it.
But that, that's in RCF.
Yeah, that was already in.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we got a lot of bike, I I would have to agree with Councilman Whitmer, just in light of all the calls that I and people that I've talked to related to the Sherros, I would think that adjusting it in and seeing how the reaction um via the intersections and seeing what the impacts would be, would probably be the uh reasonable approach.
It seems like a test pilot.
I see.
No, I, I think that makes sense, I think it makes sense to do it in this budget too, as opposed to the subsequent year.
Okay, but we can redesign the project to do that.
And so I I concur, and I think that even at the town again, when we mentioned the the bike lanes, that we were gonna do it just at the um intersections, and but I think that the green around the intersections with new striping, white stripe along, and then bike sherros, or bike, not sherros, it's a bike in, uh sign, in, you know, like that's a bike lane.
Yes, the lane even here.
Okay, it's not a shero, it's a bike image showing that it's a bike lane, and maybe, I don't know how they do it, they just say bike lane.
Bike lane. Yeah.
Like we have on the album either.
Yes, okay, so so that, and um at the intersections, like at Ensmel or Oak Grove, I think it'd be wise to also have, it'd go a little bit down those roads, you know, the green to kinda do, make the turn uh for a while, for a little bit, right?
If if there are bike lanes on those roads, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I have, I have a question, i- is the one, the one point five million dollars, was that a result of an engineering analysis? Is that where that figure came from, we actually did?
It seems like a huge amount of paint, doesn't it?
Yeah.
No, 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 but that was my next question is, it it sound, it seems like a lot of money for paint, so my guess is there's also some construction that needs to be done to make the bike lanes, and w- we're going to do that construction, the the thing that we're deciding not to do is to paint it from Redwood City to Menlo Park, we'll just paint it with the green, the fluorescent green in in
Intersection.
in at the intersections, I think that, I think that's a wise way to do it.
And I'd like to see the planning first.
But my guess is it's not gonna, we shouldn't be under the illusion that it's gonna drop the cost by half, because it's not the paint, it's the cost.
Yeah, that that's my understanding of the direction, is to to do the the bike lanes along Middlefield, make those improvements as necessary, widen there or whatever needs to be done, and only green up the intersections where appropriate.
Can, can I suggest also, when we're painting or whatever, and as you're freshening up the lines, can we have like little chevrons that kinda point the direction, so it kinda serves as a visual reminder that if it's pointing at you, you're on the wrong side of the road, because
Yeah, that is.
The second biggest problem is, is you get ready to turn and somebody's coming the wrong way, especially a bike without lights on.
Wow, that's terrible.
And so if we could help people think about that, and I see Palo Alto has done that, they've got some arrows to kinda help you think that you need to go that way, overtime will get everybody moving to the right.
Yeah, the specs will come to the council, you'll see that.
Alright.
Before it goes out.
Well, I think that's, that's an important comment, because that's one of everybody's problems, is the wrong way bike riders
Yes, I agree.
that have the commission from their parents.
I think that was the only input I needed on the CIP, I think that was sort of.
Um I just.
Would you have care of sixteen seventeen, not seventeen? Yes.
So I just wanna um in, on page six of your CIP fiscal year's funding description, I just wanna make the correction that our special parcel tax was measure X, not S, just to be.
Be correct.
Yeah.
We can do that.
Okay, just to make that one.
Before that, it was S and T.
Yeah, before that, it was S and T.
Can, can we skip Y? Maybe that would be a big.
X, Y, yeah.
Measure Y.
No, because the other, they're so arbitrary, because prior years was L and M to, you know.
In fact, this is getting in the alphabet.
Okay.
Yeah.
The motive measuring.
Alright.
Are we into the CIP?
We're into the parcel tax.
Into the parcel tax.
Yes, so the 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 parcel tax revenue is one point eight million, uh that's the full allocation of parcel tax. It expires, as we've talked about, seventeen eighteen, currently, the split is twenty eighty, thanks, twenty eighty, eighty split, so twenty percent is to public safety, which is the three hundred and seventy-two thousand, and the general fund is a transfer in, remaining eighty thousand, eighty percent is one million four eighty-eight into CIP funding. So the sixteen seventeen, this is the s- uh the the par- parcel tax CIP projects, meaning this is the projects within the parcel tax um components, so as we as we discussed earlier, the, uh in the slides, that three million nineteen, three thirty-nine is, these are the total expenditures within the parcel tax, you can see, real maintenance, uh Marsh Road, series of streetlight, six hundred and thirty-three thousand, uh bike ped, four eighty-four, you can go through, um these are the total components that are part of this three million nineteen thousand.
Remember, Robert, before you move on to the next one, we just added a million plus uh in the, for the Middlefield Road bike lane one. There's twenty-six thousand dollars at the end of the year within the parcel tax, is gas tax eligible?
Gas tax, uh it is, uh we'll have to readjust the allocations, my suggestion as we've started going through this is if we're gonna do an allocation, maybe there's that two million, right, we we, of the two million I'm allocated for the Fund Four oh one, we spent eight hundred and eighteen thousand for the Marsh Road, or allocated to be spent, um so that leaves us one million four ninety-one of that two point three million.
But you've got a line item here for bike ped improvement, streets of four eighty-four, don't we need just another six hundred or something if you have?
No, the Mar- the Middlefield project is in addition to this four hundred and four, so that's roughly.
No, be an additional.
And four eighty-four is, I mean.
Four eighty-four is Oak Grove, some, some other improvements along Middlefield, crosswalks, safe routes to school, uh.
Yeah, Middlefield, Ensmel, Oak Grove, um bike path, pathway to HPP, to the gate, um fifty thousand.
My, 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 my point is, this is a three million dollar number, it tags all of our parcel tax for the year, leaves us with twenty-six thousand dollars. If there are projects up here that can be paid with gas tax or measure A, and we still have some of that, we should do that rather than use the parcel tax.
Yeah, the parcel.
For other projects.
So, so, okay.
We're just shuffling around that.
Right.
I guess I, yeah, in my notes, I had circled the Middlefield of that, as I kind of.
Yeah, that was missing from the numbers.
Okay.
Right.
Is, we'll, we'll, I I think, looking at it right now, just at the summary level of, fun by summary level spreadsheet, I think um we will look to see what we can allocate, but there will be within the measure A and gas tax, but there'll probably be an allocation of the CIP unallocated component of that, remaining of that two million.
I would rather use as little of that as possible.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have, there, there was substantial money left over, I know that you, you.
We did move that around.
At the last meeting, you took a lot of it out, and I appreciate that, um, but maybe we could deplete it almost down to.
Yeah. I'll review it again, we'll, we'll sit down with Mike and Gordon and and George, and we'll kinda see where where we can do do the adjustment, and then uh bring that, if there's a need for additional funding from that component, we'll bring that to you in the next.
But measure A and the gas tax fund have very little balance left, forecasted at the end of the year anyway.
Yeah.
All the money's in the i- in the four oh one fund.
Right, right, I I would rather shuffle it around as much as possible to avoid the four oh one fund, but I I suspect a large percentage of that.
To avoid, you mean avoid using it, or to avoid building up amounts in it?
Uh to avoid using it in the current fiscal year, yeah.
Uh I have a question about another item up here, the Hawk Beacon, I I I know this is remaining after last year, and maybe I just missed this before. My impression was that the Fire Department and Atherton were going to share that cost, and we've got the cost at three hundred and fifty thousand, and the Fire Department put in one twenty-five, so, because we had initially thought it would be a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar cost, but we now are assessing it as a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar cost, so.
I think our budget is a hundred and twenty-seven here.
No, I understand, but I'm just wondering if the Fire Department shouldn't be kicking in another fifty thousand.
Yeah, they should do half, they agreed to do fifty percent.
Absolutely.
They agreed to do half up to cap, and I don't remember what that cap is within their agreement, I can look at it quick as you talk about some other stuff.
Okay, but and and if in fact the cost has gone up to three fifty from what we expected to be two fifty, and they set a cap, I'd like to go back to them and ask them to raise their cap.
Yeah.
To half. To half.
Right. Cause that extra fifty K will pay for the automatic light turn green system, else we'll leave that.
Yeah, then they won't.
They'll, they'll pay for a lot of things, actually.
I mean, well.
Okay.
So they paid, towns will be responsible for one sixty-five, districts will be responsible for uh one sixty-five. They paid us one twenty-five, and the remaining payment of forty will be billed upon project completion, so they paid one sixty-five as well.
Okay, and and is that based on an assessment of the the total cost being three thirty?
Yeah.
But right now, we've got the total cost of three fifty.
Yes.
That was what was budgeted in that, estimated prior.
So, no, I understand, and I, I'm, so you guys are comfortable with that, we're, it's not like we're, I don't, just don't wanna leave money on the table.
Yeah. The actual project. Yes. We definitely won't.
Yeah, sorry.
Still ten dollars.
We'll send Carrie back there and kind of get it from her.
I'll ask.
Is she bringing it up to public now?
Yeah.
If it, if it exceeds this, this amount.
If it exceeds three thirty, then we'll go back to them, that's fine, that makes me very comfortable.
Yes, there's a, there's a provision here to not authorize a change order.
Okay.
Great, I di- I didn't know about the one sixty-five, that, that's very comfortable.
And and the one twenty-seven is sixteen seventeen, the rest is presumably fifteen sixteen, is that, okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And the status on that is, where, something's on order?
Uh well, everything's been ordered, uh we've been given, as of two weeks ago, the authorization for go-ahead from Caltrans, so now we're waiting on the contractor to develop their construction schedule and to actually put boots on the ground, I'm hoping in the next week, too.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, 'cause we have the poles and everything there and.
Oh, so we've got the equipment.
Yeah, we have everything.
If it, except for the cages.
And the length of the project will be approximately?
I, you know, I thought it was three months, but it's gonna be less than that, uh I think I mentioned to you, it's gonna be a three-month deal, but I think it's a sixty-day, forty-five-day kind of project.
Right.
So what's the, what's the impact gonna be on ECR? Do we wanna do it on Marsh Road?
No, it's okay. So I, I think I mentioned to some of you, I I I got that question, you know, should we delay the Hawk Beacon project because of the Marsh Road project, because it will involve a lane closure on both sides of the road, to narrow it down to two lanes? My response was no, uh we've identified this as a high priority traffic safety, public safety project, we need to get it accomplished, it's a smaller window than the Marsh Road project, we need to just do it.
I agree, so there are some schools out there.
Kind of, talking about design, just the Marsh Road project, do we have an, an equipment on site?
Yeah. Like, like the.
Do we have the railing for the Marsh Road already fabricated and designed and, you know, on site somewhere, so that would say?
I don't. It's not on site.
But is it being?
I'm assuming it's being fabricated, but it's not on site.
Do we have a design for that? I mean, I don't think that ever came to us, uh for a design.
Yes, it's, it's.
And it was that.
Yes, we saw the images, part of the spec package.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's good.
I did see.
It, it was, it was exactly like the one you sent me from.
Okay, you're assuring that.
It leaned this way, metal with uh two, two rims, I don't know what color it is, but, but that's the design.
You might have another color choices.
Okay. It's like the.
I did see.
I did, I sent them a picture of it, I just didn't know that, yes.
Back to the Hawk really quick, we're putting in two more, and this one is coming in a little more expensive than we thought, and a lot slower than we thought. So hopefully, as we put in two more, we've learned something. Caltrans has learned something.
We don't pay for the others.
Ah, that's cool.
Yeah, that's the state.
That's all on Caltrans.
And.
On Caltrans, they, they've learned something through this process.
Well, why don't, why don't we?
Then we may, are, okay, are we certain that we're putting in two more?
We are.
Yeah.
We agree. Yeah, yeah, I agree.
They agree.
The end of the period.
Their, their timeline is twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen.
This isn't a test case.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It just depends on their timeline, I think.
Yeah.
But this is all, you know, this was all working through their spec, working through their design, getting the cages approved, that we're going into the ground, it was all on them to approve it, so they've learned something through this process.
And they probably won't call us to talk about traffic. Probably not.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on.
So the next slide kinda shows you the annual funding sources that are known funding sources uh sixteen seventeen, so parcel tax is one point four million, gas tax two hundred and twenty-five thousand, measure M seventy-five thousand, Atherton Channel ninety-seven thousand three hundred, and measure A three hundred and forty thousand, so as you can see, total funding for our CIP in sixteen seventeen is two point two million, majority of it is the parcel tax, one point four million. Then staff, so staff recommends that the council allocate the special parcel tax at its full rate for fiscal year sixteen seventeen, based on the town's current and future capital project needs, this allows the town to embark on a program capital projects and save for future years, and it meets the needs of our, uh needs of our master plan priorities. Also, staff also recommends, as George alluded to earlier, the council revisit the CIP project allocation for six, seventeen, eighteen through twenty twenty-one, our next, our CIP basically for the next fiscal year going forward during our mid-year budget discussion, so next February.
Good idea.
So, uh these um funding sources of gas, measure A, Atherton Channel, and measure A, those are pretty consistent with what we've received in past years, is there any prospective increases in these, or it's pretty static?
Uh I. It's pretty static, I think over the years, measure A, it was less than the three forty, it was around two ninety, that's gone up over, over the years, in the past two fiscal years, gas tax ranges between one eighty-five um t- to two twenty. Gas tax ranges between one eighty-five, um, to, to twenty, two twenty-five actually. Um, the last two years, it's been like that, consistent. So we, we monitor what we get through, and it's all, again, it's, it's a tax, so it's a relative on that gas tax.
I, I would hope that Water Committee that you're a part of, that's a regional water, you know, storm water runoff and bait protection and such, develop some sort of regional funding mechanism
Mm-hmm.
that contributes to our capital project needs in the future for drainage, brocade improvements like that.
For drainage, for, yeah, water, yeah, brocade.
Yeah, I s- uh, I think, you know, I realize it's not a lot of this chart, and it was on before I got here, but the, the sales tax looked to me like it was, might be understated. I realized that we had that one spike here, but last year we generated, we got over four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and this year we've gotten it in at three hundred. So I think it's a new norm, might be around four hundred. So that could be extra funding that we could get and reuse as well, so, so that's good.
We'll be always, um.
Yeah, again, in fourteen fifteen, we received six hundred and eighty-seven thousand, and I think three hundred and sixty-six thousand was that lump sum sale. So yeah, our, our sales tax is about three hundred thousand between two ninety, two seventy-five to three hundred thousand, I think. Um, right now, we're probably about two seventy-five, two seventy, and we haven't rece, we've only been paid up to March.
But that just goes to the general fund, that doesn't, that's not allocated.
Uh, I think it'll, it, it'll flow through in, in other avenues.
Of course.
Right. Right.
On the water, since it would've brought up, you know, when I've spoken with people from, uh, the county and, and others, um, they've all asked, are the other communities that contribute water paying for it? And so, uh, you know, I think that, you know, it's not the subject, it's just a comment, but people seem to have expected that we've gotten money from other communities for the Marsh Road.
True.
Don't want to put their hands up.
Right?
Yeah, the memory.
With that, that concludes the second item, so what we're looking for is, we'll, we'll bring it back at, at the next meeting, is the allocation component of the parcel tax at its full rate. And that's what the staff is rec, the staff is recommending.
Okay, so.
But you're not look, you're just looking for concurrence or you're not looking for a motion?
Correct, no motion, no action, right.
Right.
Anything else?
I do, I, one question on this, I'm looking, there's a sentence in here that I'm not so sure I understand. And it's on page three or, page three of six, and it, of course, it just reads, um, if the parcel tax is not renewed beginning in fiscal year eighteen nineteen, then four point eight million dollars in road improvement maintenance, as well as drainage and bike pedestrian improvement projects will not be fulfilled. Um, there feels like a lot of conclusions in there, that, that I'm not sure that.
It won't be fulfilled with the parcel tax.
Exactly.
We would have other monies at this point to do that.
I, I, I just. I, I'm very sensitive to appear that we are, uh, hanging things over people's heads or anything else, and I wouldn't wanna project something like that.
Yeah, you're right, but those, those projects could be funded with other sources.
Correct.
And they might be delayed.
Correct.
But they could still be funded.
Correct.
Well, we could manipulate the money.
Thank you. Pardon?
We could manipulate the funding, the finances.
Why, just to make sure we.
It, it's just to show that, you know, we, we're relying on it, and we're, we're already programmed to progress.
I understand that, I guess what I'm sensitive to though is if we're gonna go back to the voters, I don't wanna start right now, um.
Holding him hostage.
Yes. I mean, laying a record that, that I think is perhaps incomplete or misleading in any way, shape, or form. Yeah.
Right.
Clear.
Any other comments from the council? Any, um, comments from our finance chair? Questions? Yes, we're, this is, uh, very well laid out, easy to digest, we have all the answers. Thank you very much.
We like the shorter presentation.
Other than sixty-five.
Me too.
Well, it's a new story too.
It's a very good new story, um, but we're, I think, um, as one of our, our vice, uh, finance chair would say, it's really good to see the money being allocated to the projects so that we can touch and feel them. Uh, you know, it kind of, uh, upsets me that we had, uh, the parcel tax money all last year, we didn't really allocate it. But we're now implementing it, and, uh, it, we need to see some of the results, you know, fill those pockets and, uh, review the channel.
And paint out sherros, don't, thermoplastic sherros.
Yes.
Yeah.
Those thermoplastic sherros, yeah.
We have a million dollars of.
Yeah, I know, I know, it's mad too.
Here we are.
It's like over, over a railroad tracks.
From there, you're, you're in your closed session, you're.
So we're gonna adjourn, uh, uh, the, um, open council meeting, and we'll, um, go into closed session. The, um, excuse our finance director, finance, um, director and our finance, uh, chair. Goodbye, Bob, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you, Bob.